The Columbus City Council meeting will now, for February 22nd, 2022, will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, Nebraska Revised Statute 84-1407, a current copy of this act is posted in the meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley.
Here.
Augustine Schulte.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Hemer.
Here.
Jablonsky. Creshaw.
Here.
Lor.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mrs. Council President.
Our Father. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other, as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bumpers steaming in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. We've got a full house this evening. If at any time during our meeting, anyone would like to come forward and speak to anything on our agenda, we'd ask that you please do come forward, give your name, address, and we'd ask that you keep any comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll begin with the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item four A, minutes of the February 7th, 2022 city council meeting. Item four B, resolution number R22-14, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Item four C, finance department reports. And item four D, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council, would you like to remove anything from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to public hearings.
Item seven A, public hearing. Application of Tokyo Mount Fuji Catering LLC doing business as Tokyo Japanese Cuisine for a retail Class I liquor license at 2610 23rd Street.
Is there anyone here this evening to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing? I would entertain a...
Mr. Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Can I extend that? That motion to include the approval of it?
Um, okay. I move that the public hearing be closed and that the liquor license be approved. Is that what you wanted, Mrs. Klein?
You're making a recommendation to the Liquor Commission for approval, not actually approving.
Would you like me to try that again?
Go ahead. I think you got a recommended motion listed up there.
I would like to, oh, the public hearing to be closed and a recommendation be made to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission to approve the retail class liquor license. Is that enough? Okay, there we go.
Got to read the cheat sheet, I guess.
I guess.
Second still. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven A1, application of Tokyo Japanese Cuisine for Chen Chen Wang as manager in conjunction with the liquor license.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the application of Tokyo Japanese Cuisine for Cheng Cheng Wang as manager be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven B, public hearing. Application of 23rd West LLC doing business as Boz West Sports Bar for retail Class C liquor license at 3720 23rd Street.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed and a recommendation be made to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission to approve the retail Class C liquor license for Boz West Sports Bar.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven B1, application of Boz West Sports Bar for Tiffany K. Nelson Check as manager in conjunction with the liquor license.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the application of Boz West Sports Bar for Tiffany K. Nelson Check as manager be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Whoops, got ahead of myself. Sorry. Motion passes.
Item seven C, public hearing. Redevelopment Plan for Convergence LLC Redevelopment Project. Redevelopment Area 10, located approximately northeast of the intersection of Highway 81 and 63rd Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close this public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven C1, resolution number R22-15, approving the redevelopment plan for Convergence LLC Redevelopment Project.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R22-15 be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt. Resolution number R2215, any discussion?
I just, for the record, I'd like to go over my memo that was included with the Planning Commission agenda. There's a, this is a big redevelopment project for the city of Columbus. And there's, you know, tax increment financing is a complicated tool. So I want to just briefly go over the content that I've provided. The redevelopment plan details a proposed redevelopment project including the construction of entertainment and gaming facilities consisting of a horse track, casino, hotel, and related amenities. A detailed description of the project is located on Page 2, Section C of the redevelopment plan. In order for the area to be used for the planned purpose, substantial improvements are required, including all public infrastructure on 63rd Avenue. Traffic impact analysis and required improvements, public sidewalks, trails, significant landscaping improvements are all required in the plan. Section F, Page 8, to be specific. These improvements represent a substantial investment in public infrastructure that would otherwise be a significant taxpayer and property owner expense. Over $11 million of public streets, water, and sewer improvements are required for the project. A full list of the TIF eligible expenses are detailed in Exhibit E. The redevelopers, city, and our legal counsel have ensured that the plan is in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan. An in-depth review is provided in Section D of the plan, Pages 3 through 8. At the time of the final plating and annexation, the redeveloper will be requesting rezoning of the property to B2. Commercial recreation and gaming facilities use types are allowed in the B2 zone. As detailed in the plan, the B2 designation is appropriate for the horse racing tracks, stables, hotel, and casino facilities. The track comprises a business engaged in the provision of sport, horse racing, which falls within the commercial recreation use. On-site wagering falls within the gaming facilities use type. The stables will not permanently board horses as the racing season will only span a five-to-six-week period each year. As such, the mere periodic present of horses, presence of horses on the premises is accessory to the permitted uses and does not require its own designation. The final plat, annexation, and zoning issues are anticipated to be before the Planning Commission next month. The three initiatives related to gambling, which came before voters in November of 2020 in the general election, were passed by a wide margin in the state and in the city of Columbus. Of the three measures, the lowest approval percentage was 62.3% among city of Columbus voters. The implications of the vote are particularly telling in Columbus as we have one of only, as we had only one of six previously licensed horse racing tracks in the state, thereby making it one of the anticipated sites for a casino project. It's been determined that the cost-benefit analysis prepared in conjunction with the plan and attached as Exhibit F sets forth the factors required under Section 18-2113 of the Nebraska Revised Statutes and supports the city's adoption and approval of the plan. Based on the expected revenues generated from the state's 20% tax on gambling revenues, the redevelopment project is estimated to result in additional revenues to be split between the city of Columbus and Platte County between $2.25 million and $2.9 million. In addition to the gambling tax, the city of Columbus will see an increase in local option sales tax. The casino and the racetrack are estimated to generate an additional $600,000 annually. The hotel, restaurant, and any other operations will generate additional local sales tax. This will give the city a significant advantage to other communities, allowing investment in our police department, fire department, park and recreation amenities, housing, infrastructure, et cetera. As the plan states, the impacts and opportunities related to the redevelopment project conform to the objectives and guidance stated in the comprehensive plan and outweigh arguments against the project. If the city does not adapt and seize the opportunity presented, it's inevitable that the neighboring communities will welcome the redevelopment project with open arms, thereby resulting in the failure to actually eliminate the concerns raised while being unable to reap the positive impacts associated with the project. Convergence intends to begin construction in the spring of 2022, pending approval of this redevelopment plan. If approved, the public and private improvements will be completed by the end of 2023. Thank you.
I just, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
The, we, you said something about the profits would be split between the county and the state. Is that, or the county and the city?
City.
That's a 50/50?
That's laid out. Oh, go ahead.
So, the state, and the measures that voters voted on, a 20% tax on gambling revenues is paid to the state. 70% of that goes to property tax relief for the state's use. 20% of it is split, or 25% of it is split between Platte County and the city of Columbus.
And that's cut and halved, even?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Excuse me?
Any other questions? Yes, Prin?
25% is split among the licensed tracks.
No.
No.
25% of the revenue generated at the casino and racetrack here is given to city of Columbus and half to Platte County.
All right, but that is the casino here and not necessarily the other casinos throughout the state.
No, and when we came up with estimates, the estimates were what gaming would provide through the state on the six horse tracks. It was estimated that 60% of that would be generated through Omaha and Lincoln. 40% then would be generated by the other four tracks. Our portion of that other 40% is the 2.5 to 2.9 million that has been represented in this estimate.
Thank you.
So to the city of Columbus, 2.5 to 2.9 is a 1 and 1/4 to 1.5 million dollar tax base.
Further confirmed by the revenues expected by the operation that we're approving tonight.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Our TIF attorney is here. If anybody wishes to ask any questions related to taxing. David, do you have anything you want to address for the record? David Levy, Baird Home.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Madam City Administrator, David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm. We appreciate the opportunity to serve as outside counsel to the city with regard to its use of tax increment financing. I think the city administrator said it very well. I really don't have anything to add. We, as legal counsel, have reviewed the redevelopment plan that's before you tonight. All of the other documents prepared in conjunction with this redevelopment plan and with this project, we find them all to be in conformance with the community development law and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
I think it's important to recognize this proposal was in front of Planning and Zoning a week ago. Was aired there and, and had the ability for the public to come forward and give their inputs and their feedbacks. And there was no negative feedback that came back in through Planning and Zoning. And again, here this evening, there's been no negative feedback. We all know that all programs, all projects have pluses and minuses. This was, you know, diligently worked to try to minimize the negatives that would be there and build the positives that this would bring to our community. So I think we want to, you know, look, look forward to what we have here and wish them well as we get underway. Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to reports of council committees.
Item 10A, Public Property Safety and Works Committee of February 14th, 2022. Item 10A1, designation of city property as surplus and authorization to advertise for bids to purchase. This is west of 35th Avenue and north of 25th Street. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends to the city that the city-owned property located out west of 35th Avenue and north of 25th Street be designated as surplus and staff be authorized to advertise for bids to purchase.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this report be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10A2, master trail plan for the city. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends the citywide master trail plan be approved.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this report be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt the master trail plan for the city. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10A3, July through December, 2021 Quarterly Reports of the Traffic Control Device Committee. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends the quarterly reports of Traffic Control Device Committee be approved.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this report be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt the July through December, 2021 Quarterly Report of Traffic Control Device. Any comments or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10B, Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee of February 15th, 2022. Item 10B1, request of Platte Valley Humane Society to amend the city code to allow residential properties to have no more than three dogs or four cats or a total of six pets over four months of age. The Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee recommends the city code be amended to allow residential properties to have no more than three dogs or four cats for a total of six over four months of age.
Mr. Mayor, I move this committee report re-adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Very simply put, they want to allow people to have four cats.
Done.
Instead of three, right.
Instead of three, correct.
Seeing all, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item 13A, appointment of Ryan Gray as a fire chief.
Uh, council members, with your permission, the mayor would like to submit the name of Ryan Gray for appointment to the fire chief position. Per council rules, the two-week waiting period is waived for an appointment of a paid firefighter. The Civil Service Commission certified the following three fire chief candidates at their meeting held January 19th, 2022. Ryan Gray, Brian Lipti, and Trent Kleino. Ryan graduated from Nansimond River High School in Suffolk, Virginia, continuing on to Columbia Southern University in Orange Beach, Alabama, where he earned his Associate's Degree in Fire Science and a Bachelor's Degree in Fire Administration. He continued on to Waldorf University in Forest City, Iowa, where he earned his Master's Degree in Organizational Leadership with a concentration in fire rescue executive leadership. He has 16 years of fire service in both career and volunteer roles, starting in 2005 with the Driver Volunteer Fire Department, where he served as fire lieutenant. He joined the Smithfield Volunteer Fire Department in 2012, where he was the deputy fire chief. Gray has been with the city of Portsmouth, Virginia since 2008, serving as fire lieutenant. Ryan has supervised AD-plus personnel in both career and volunteer service, organizational leadership and development for assigned subordinates, 13 years of incident command experience. Gray is a member of PPE Committee, R&amp;D for Technical Rescue, SOG, Fire Academy Training Officer for 15 recruits, and Academy Coordinator for 20 recruits, hazmat and EMS. He has served as an EMT-B and an AEMT as allowed by TEMS protocols and standing orders of the OMD for 18 years. And I would like to make a motion that the mayor's appointment be ratified.
Second. We have a motion and a second to ratify. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. And you did very well with that vocabulary. Motion passes.
It's a perk for being a teacher, right?
Item 13B, appointment of Nathan Jones as the assistant fire chief.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor would like to submit the name of Nathan Jones for appointment to the assistant fire chief position. Per council rules, the two-week waiting period is waived for an appointment of a paid firefighter. The Civil Service Commission certified the following three assistant fire chief candidates at their meeting held January 18th, 2022. Nathan Jones, Terrence Janaszek, and Craig Dagan. Nathan Jones holds a Bachelor's Degree in Fire Science Administration from Waldorf University in Forest City, Iowa. He received his Master's Degree in Organizational Leadership, Fire Rescue Executive Leadership in 2021 at Waldorf University. He has been employed as a firefighter for the Columbus Fire Department since 2009 and has been serving as lieutenant since October of 2019. Nathan is certified as firefighter one, firefighter two, fire officer one, fire officer two, hazmat technician, hazmat operations, swift water rescue technician, instructor one and instructor two, and apparatus driver operator pumper. He holds his paramedic license, as well as certification in advanced cardiac life support and pediatric advanced life support. He serves as an instructor for the Columbus Volunteer Fire Academy and is an instructor for the Nebraska State Fire Marshal Training Division. He is a Columbus resident. And I would like to make a motion that the mayor's appointment of Ryan Gray, I'm sorry, of Nathan Jones be approved as assistant fire chief. Do we need a second?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to start, Mayor. I, I know there's been a lot of discussion between the council and yourself. That discussion, I believe, should be to help protect the reputation of Mr. Jones, kept between ourselves. With that being said, you know, I would like to see that we table this and when the new chief gets his foothold, maybe start again and let him have input, since he's going to be directly working and, and the assistant chief would be directly working under the chief. I think he should have some input on maybe who's going to be working with him.
Bring up all three of them, too.
And I, I guess there was, there was three that were ratified and only two interviewed. Was there a reason why the, the third wasn't interviewed?
Do you have any answer?
Yeah, I mean, go ahead.
Um, well, after, the mayor and I participated, as well as volunteer representative and fire union representative participated in the first round of interviews and the second round of interviews. And we didn't believe that the third candidate that was certified warranted a, a second interview.
But I'd like to make that as a motion, that we table it and move forward after the new chief is...
I would second Terry, or Troy's motion for tabling.
Any other discussion? Anyone from the audience want to speak? Please, come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, Madam Administrator.
Move the mic, thank you.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, good evening, city council members, Mr. Mayor, Madam Administrator. I'm JoJo Dunn, I'm a nine-year veteran with the Columbus Fire Department. I'm also the president of the International Association of Firefighters Local 1575. I was elected by the Columbus Career Firefighters to speak for them in times like these. As you can see from the group of career firefighters behind me, we show full, full support for the appointment of Nathan Jones as assistant fire chief. There is also a group of active volunteers that are sitting with us that also support this. Unfortunately, only about eight to 10 volunteers are considered active and able to respond to calls on a regular basis for various reasons. Among those active volunteers that I have spoken with, almost all completely support the appointment of Lieutenant Jones. Over the years, I personally observed Lieutenant Jones grow tremendously, not only in maturity, but also in knowledge and responsibility. Lieutenant Jones has worked tirelessly the past few years to improve job performance for both career and volunteer firefighters. He's been heavily involved with training, the training academy that both the career and volunteer staff have attended. All new career and volunteer staff that do not have firefighter one or hazmat operations are required to attend this academy. As my current shift commander, Lieutenant Jones has been great to work for. The promotion has done a lot for the growth of Lieutenant Jones, both personally and professionally. He's had personal input and new policies and procedures put forth by command that has contributed to the greater benefit of the department and thus the city as whole. Lieutenant Jones is committed to leaving this department better than he found it. He believes heavily in education and training. Lieutenant Jones earned both his bachelor and master's degrees since I've known him. Both of the degrees have been for the purpose of furthering his knowledge in the fire service and making possible future promotions such as this. He's done this under his own fruition and own finances. The department cannot afford to be led by administrators that do not have a high level of education, training, and experience. No other combination fire department would hire command staff without these. Lieutenant Jones's belief in training and minimum standards across the entire department are both warranted and necessary. Without training and standards, one cannot measure performance and gauge improvement. I think we can all agree how important skill and performance are in this profession. The president of the volunteers even stated that he believes the training is going in the right direction and a minimum standard is necessary. I, along with the president of the volunteers, had the privilege of participating in the interview of candidates for both the, the new chief and assistant fire chief. Let me assure you, of those applicants for assistant fire chief, Lieutenant Jones was by far the best and most qualified candidate for the professional position of assistant fire chief. I, as well as other career firefighters and several volunteers, agree that Lieutenant Jones will do a great job as assistant fire chief. Jones will do a great job as assistant fire chief. He fully understands the importance of having volunteers in our current department and in current situation. Lieutenant Jones is aware of how much the department relies on volunteer firefighters to complete our mission. We simply could not be completely successful without volunteers that show up to calls. The union and the department are aware of many untrue and overstated things that are being said about Lieutenant Jones and the career firefighters. Quite frankly, I'm very disappointed that one of his own is involved in this. While it is true that there is a lot of change happening in the fire department, the new chief and assistant chief are not going to be there to push the volunteers out. Some will not like the change, which is true for any job. Some may choose to leave. However, most volunteers, they're making the most noise and complaining the most are the ones that are not active and show up to calls. It'll be up to each individual firefighter if they can agree with or work with the coming changes in the department. I have personally heard senior volunteers state, correction, senior volunteer firefighters state that they are losing power and it seems to be their only concern at this time. Power within the department is not the priority of the union or the career staff. Having a safe, honest, and highly trained department are the priorities of this union local. The citizens of Columbus do not care if it is a volunteer or a career staff that responds to their call. They expect the same level of service from both. Whether a volunteer or career member, we are all the Columbus Fire Department, and we believe Lieutenant Jones can help and keep the department on that level. With that being said, the position of assistant fire chief is of utmost importance to support and relieve the fire chief of some of his duties. In order to do that successfully, the assistant chief needs high levels of education, experience, and skill. That is why the city did not see any other applicants for this position from the current career staff. We simply knew we were not ready for such an important responsibility. Lieutenant Jones is ready for that responsibility, and he will serve this department, both volunteer and career, and the city very well. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
You said that eight to ten of the volunteers are active.
Yes.
How many total volunteers are on this force?
I believe the last count was somewhere between thirty-five and forty.
Are they not responding because they're not certified?
No.
As far as you know, all the volunteers are certified?
No, only eight to ten would be considered certified, as in fire one certification, hazmat operations, those sorts of certifications.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
I have a question for you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
The, we have a motion about tabling this particular decision until the fire chief, or until our fire chief is here. Does the fire chief have power to determine if we're going to relieve the assistant fire chief from his duties? Or is this the governing body that makes that decision? Or, and I'm just wondering, if the fire chief has that ability, then we really wouldn't need a reason to table it if the fire chief has that authority to make a decision to keep them or let them go?
The fire chief will run his department. We, I, will make an appointment of fire chief.
Okay, yes.
The reality is, the appointment of the assistant chief is not designated to have to come before the council.
Okay.
We did that in an effort to bring it forth because it was a new position. If you all remember, we go back on, two or three months ago, we brought to the council and the public the need to reorganize the department. This became evident with the resignation of Fire Chief Miller and looking at what our, how our fire department was structured. We brought that to you, which included developing an assistant, taking our lieutenants to captain positions to recognize the scope of work and the responsibilities that they entail, and developing a captain's position for the volunteers. That captain position for the volunteers was specifically set out and designated to become a liaison between the volunteers and the assistant chief and the new chief. And was told, whoever that would become, he would be selected by the volunteers, that he would be part of the command staff. I think the thing we want to remember is the days of the volunteers that we all see on the wall calendars and the old picture shows are gone. The need for volunteers is still with us. But to be an active volunteer today, you have to be able to give time, energy, and effort for training and retention and improvement. We can't get away from our jobs like we used to be able to get away from. We spend more time with our families and our children and don't want to get away from them. So, thinking that the call comes in and everybody drops what they need to take a run for the station or the accident scene just doesn't happen. So, we need to be able to develop those eight or ten, twelve or fourteen, that want to be active volunteers that our firefighters can rely on and our citizens can rely on for the services that they expect when they call nine-one-one. And I think we have been, we have been working with a system that has been slowly deteriorating because of lack of leadership and not paying attention to what we need to do to develop it, to nurture our volunteers, to make them feel important, make them feel like they're needed, and at the same time, give them the training that they need so that our firefighters feel comfortable when they're standing next to them during a call. Now, you all can take this and you can table it if that's what you want to do. I think it's a huge mistake. I think we have made a decision to put the right person in the right spot. It will disappoint some people. The changes that are going to come over the next six to twelve to eighteen months will disappoint some people, and you will not have the same core of an organization that you have today. Change comes hard for people, but change is coming.
So, well, it appears to me, and this is just a statement from my perception here, the council has followed, I think, excellent protocol in this whole process of hiring both of these positions. We didn't have to bring things to the council, but we chose to do that anyway out of courtesy. And whatever, the decision to hire our people that we've hired isn't going to be locked in stone. There are, there is a dynamic where those changes can be made if, in the long run, we look at this and we see that maybe something does need to be changed, or that kind of thing. And so, I am myself perfectly comfortable with not tabling and voting on it tonight. I, I think we have had all of our opportunities to speak at different times, and so, I'm good with voting tonight. And I know that we've had a motion to table it and a second. We've also had a motion to approve the ratification.
The one thing that I would ask, and JoJo, you spoke as the union rep and for the paid firefighter, full-time firefighters, which we would have expected that, I would have expected that. But as you mentioned, there are a contingent of volunteers here. And I know it's tough to get up in front of the world and give your name and say anything, but if anyone would, I would appreciate anyone who would like to step up and let us know from the volunteer side what we are hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Celestino Carbajal. I am a three-year member of the Volunteer Fire Department here in Columbus. I am lieutenant for the WY Missile Company, firefighter one, hazmat operations, and EMT here. I'm what I would consider what JoJo probably referred to as one of the more active members of the department. I fear that some of this feedback, or negative feedback, from hiring Lieutenant Jones is more on a personal basis rather than a professional basis. I think everyone who was present, which I was, at the interviews for all the, for the Assistant Fire Chief position, he was by far head and shoulders above than all the other applicants. I apologize, I'm nervous, I don't usually speak in public.
That's fine, you're doing fine.
But I think, touching on what JoJo said, I feel that I was properly trained, and a big part of that was Lieutenant Jones and the other members of the fire department that helped me train. JoJo Dunn was my EMT instructor, Nathan Jones, Ryan Sabata, they all helped me throughout this whole process, and some of the members that are here present as well. I just feel that if someone else was to be hired, it would be a mistake. Touching on what Mr. Hammers mentioned about tabling, I think if the panel that interviewed the fire chief, which is a more important position in my eyes, in my opinion, if they're good enough to hire a chief, that should be good enough to hire an assistant chief if they so fit. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council, Mayor, my name is Dustin Nelson, probationary with Engine Company One. I'm fresh out of the academy. Nate Jones was one of the best instructors that I could ask for. You ask a simple, you know, question, how do I get up to the ladder? He'd tell you, okay, standard operating procedures, you know. He'd go into depth. He wouldn't just go just, more or less, just straight arrow. He'd actually give and explain everything to you, why we do things the way we do. And especially in the time of need last year, to where we had lost Dan Miller after he had resigned and everything else, Nate was left to pick up all the pieces from training. I felt like I learned more than him and Ryan Sabata, both those two, they had, our training was kind of, it was great, but Nate picked up the pieces. He was always there. You come in on days off to where you work with red shift, black shift, any of the shifts, you felt like you were part of the team. As a volunteer, that's where the direction that I see him going with is to volunteers can work right beside our career staff, to where if one of our career guys needs a day off, other volunteers can come cover. Yes, we've had issues to where our staffing issues, more or less personal reasons why they don't like Nate, but however, they don't see the actual, what's the fruit basket, what he offers, the lessons, the training, everything all together. He's a great trainer, you know? All the scenes I've been on with him, the fire, car accidents, he's taking control, he's cool as a cucumber, but he's, I definitely sit right next to him, and I'd love to keep learning more from him. I feel like he's the best candidate coming from the volunteers. Thank you.
Evening, Natalie Porter. I'm captain with the volunteers of Engine Company One. I, I support Nate Jones, I supported him from the beginning. I was part of that transition between having a volunteer chief to going full-time. When I started, I felt lost. We had air pack training four times a year, and then boom, you're ready for fire rescue, you know? I was one of the few volunteers that went through the academy because I wanted to, it was not required, we were grandfathered in. I wanted to learn, I had three amazing instructors, one of them Nate Jones. His heart's in training, that's why I feel he's the right person for the job, because from what I understand, assistant chief, that's going to be a priority. Yeah, I guess, I don't have much to say, except for I can't imagine anyone else in the position.
Thank you.
You know, for the record, I want to say, kind of reiterate what some has already been said and what the mayor said, but from the beginning, we've made a lot of really big decisions when it's come to the fire department over the last few years, especially over the last few months. And I would say, you know, significant and equal in significance to this decision, we have been a hundred percent transparent. We have put our best foot forward. Nathan is a current employee, which is why this is so disturbing to me. He's in good standing, he's professional, he's extremely qualified, and he's the best person for the job. I think you should approve his appointment tonight. You know, you've hired me to help run the city, the community has elected the mayor. We followed a very open process, you were all included in that, and so, if you chose not to be, chose not to participate, I would think you would take our recommendation and move forward. That's what the department wants, I think you've heard that loud and clear here. And again, Nathan is extremely qualified, he's a huge asset to the department, he's in good standing as a current employee, and he shouldn't be penalized for one or two decisions or things that have happened that weren't his fault. That's all I have to say.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Yes, Dennis.
Mr. Mayor, well, my own personal opinion is, if I was going to be the new fire chief, I would like to have some input in who I'm going to be working with for, that's going to be my assistant. And so, I just think the fire chief should have a little say-so in picking the new assistant fire chief.
Certainly understand where you're coming from in your comment. I can, I can tell you that during the interview processes with the three candidates that were interviewed for chief, they all knew that there would be a new assistant chief hired, and not any of them expressed a desire or concern that that gentleman might be hired without them. It was never brought up, it was never a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Were they ever asked?
And since selection, the conversation has specifically come up, and there's been no concern about the selection.
They knew. We have a motion, any other discussion?
So, I think we have one motion and a second.
Yeah, we have another comment to be made.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city administrator.
My name's Benjamin Paul Bush.
I'm a lieutenant for host company number two firefighters. I was one of the first ones that went through our volunteer academy. I did not have to, but I did. Better make myself a better firefighter, better hazmat operations. Lieutenant Jones was my instructor, along with a couple other very fine-educated men. Council members, Mr. Mayor, you will not find a better person to take over as assistant chief for the Columbus Fire Department. At times, I wanted to give up. Lieutenant Jones was there to push me a little further to make me succeed. I'm a better firefighter because of that man. And I can't see anyone better fit than Lieutenant Jones to take over as the assistant fire chief for the Columbus Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Final comment that I would make is that any of you here that have been involved in hiring individuals know that it is not a perfect game. You take what's given you for information, you do your research, you do your homework, you weigh the positives against the negatives. And when all that is said and done, it still becomes a crapshoot. That is life. So, we take the pluses we know, if they outweigh the negatives, we as leaders then try to identify those negatives and work on those to improve them. Now, any of you here that are better at doing that than we are or I am, more power to you with the vote you want to take. We have a motion and a second to table this. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. One, two, three, four, one, two, three.
That was to table?
That was to table, motion fails.
Are there any other motions?
Any other, we had a motion to.
Approve.
Approve. Approve, do we have a second to approve?
Second.
Make it a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any dis- further, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Charlie, Mr. Barr.
Sorry, nobody knows me like that.
Well.
I saw it in the phone book.
Motion passed.
I don't see it.
It's here, we'll bring it right here.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Motion passes, Mr. Jones, congratulations, look forward to your position.
Congratulations, Nathan.
We could take a moment if our firefighters would like to leave, I'm sure the public is wondering who is protecting us this evening? Would you please get off camera? And ladies and gentlemen, thank you for what you do. We'll give them a second to get, well, we could go, yes, ma'am.
Mine stays stuck on this, on the fire chief.
All right, they're being pretty quiet, we can move on to
Item thirteen C.
Thirteen C.
Quote from the Nebraska Golf and Turf and the amount of fifty-two thousand eight hundred ninety for ten golf carts for the golf courses.
May I move the quote from Nebraska Golf and Turf for golf carts be accepted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen D, Northeast Nebraska Area Agency on Aging, twenty-twenty-three Detailed Plan of Operation and Budget and Application for Funding for the Columbus Community Center.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Northeast Nebraska Era, Area Agency on Aging, twenty-twenty-three Deep Detailed Plan of Operation and Budget and Application for Funding be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen E, Application of Scott Zegar for Preliminary Plat of SNS Homes Subdivision Southwest of the Intersection of Forty-first Street and Forty-eighth Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move the preliminary plat of SNS Homes subdivision be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen F, Public Hearing Application of Scott Zegar for Final Plat and Development Agreement of SNS Homes Subdivision Southwest of the Intersection of Forty-first Street and Forty-eighth Avenue, the Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move the public hearing be closed.
You better ask if anybody's here. Ask if anybody's here to speak against this public hearing.
Evening, Brett Comph, thirty-nine thirty, Forty-eighth Avenue. And it, could you put up the plat for me, please? Thank you. I'm not necessarily against, you know, um, some housing there. But it's kind of the, the plat itself that I'm, I think it's a little bit, um, ill, ill-conceived how it's put together and that. I know S, SNS Homes a good builder, everything like that, but I, I just concerned about the plat.
And those concerns would be what, Brett?
Well, kind of, I think, you know, I think they're really squeezing four homes into a very small area. That's point eight oh acres there, that's not a big area. If you look at average lot sizes, they're like, you know, a quarter. So that would be for four houses, one acre. Here they're squeezing in four homes in an area that really, um, you know, you have some bigger lots there. I, and there's that one lot that's only like sixty by a hundred, you're not gonna find any lot that size anywhere's close in that area whatsoever. Even in Tall Grass, which has some smaller lots, there's nothing close to that size. Um, and then I look at Lot Four there, I mean, you're making a, a cutout on Forty-eighth Avenue specifically for one lot, for one house there. You're making a whole cutout there. And I know it's not easy to get cutouts along Forty-eighth Avenue, I know people have been denied for getting cutouts there, so it's not an easy thing. And here you're just allowing it just for one house, not a big house either. You go up and down Forty-eighth Avenue, you'll see there's cutouts for future subdivisions that are gonna happen and things like that. But not for just one house here. And I, I don't know why this wouldn't have been done, you know, before the road was put in, everything else like that. That's why I'm saying I think it's ill-conceived how it's put together here. Um, and especially the lot sizes, now if he was to put, you know, he's got one house there, fine, if he was to do two more, it would be, it'll look a lot better. Here it's gonna be jig-jagged, shorter lots in certain areas. Um, and I would be all for that, you know, all for that. I live just to the south of there and I don't know if the new, you know, with the, uh, the setbacks, if it's seven foot or ten foot. You know, but if it's seven foot, I mean, that's sitting right close to my lot line there. You know, a side of a house. And so, I mean, I would really I think he's just kind of putting, putting too much in a small lot. If you go just to the south of there in Crestwood, those are half-acre lots. You get a nine hundred and sixty square foot on there, just one house on a half-acre lot. Here you're stuffing four houses in a point eight oh, uh, acre area here and it's just too much. You know, and so I don't know, and I don't know, you know, on the covenants, I don't think you guys get involved in the covenants. You know, to see future plans there on what's gonna be built there. If those covenants are being met, I'm sure they probably are, but I don't know who checks on that, you know?
Neil, I don't know if you wanna address that, it's not us.
It wouldn't be the city, it'd be the other homeowners in the area.
Yeah, and that's tough.
That'd be the ones that have the right to enforce the covenants, not the, not the city.
And it's tough, I know twice we've had to, um, go back because the covenants were not met, you know? And so that's tough for homeowners to try to figure all of that out, so I think it'd be easier just to redesign this plat and don't have the, because when you drive into Tall Grass there, you know, they get into that turning lane, you're gonna be making another cutout, which is very close to that area where they're turning into Tall Grass. I mean, I could see someone just coming up, right up, and the guy wants to stop in and turn to this future house, someone hit him right in the rear end there, I mean, it's very tight there. Cause they're pulling in on that turning lane, even where I'm living, you know, and they're pulling in to go into Tall Grass there. So I think there's a concern there too.
Brett, the, again, this was similar to our last item and it was brought to planning and zoning last Monday.
Yeah.
Were these issues and concerns
I would have loved to have been there. I, I had a nine month, I planned a vacation nine months out, my wife wouldn't have liked it if I canceled that, so.
I hear ya, I hear ya.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm not blaming you for not being there, but I'm asking because, you know, the reality is that's really where the best place to air these concerns are.
You say that, I know that, but, I mean, they only get their information a couple of days ahead of time anyways. And they generally are rubber stamping a lot of items there.
I disagree with that.
I, I, I do, I, they don't get to see that information upfront for very long.
Well, a lot of the information we don't get until a certain time and most people wanna keep things moving. Our objective is to help the public keep things moving also.
We might disagree a little bit on that, but, uh.
I would also tell you that Crestwood has some wonderful half-acre lots. Half-acre lots are a thing of the past.
They are.
In the communities of Columbus and others.
Hey, I agree, I agree, but hey, you could put three, three houses on those, but not four.
Well, you know, the, the size of a house and the, and its, and its relationship to the lot to, to me has a lot to do with the eyes of the beholder, as long as it, it, it falls within line of the, you know, our land use development and, and the ordinances within the city.
I understand that.
I mean, I, that, that's my feeling on that, I, I, I mean, I understand your thoughts and your concerns, I'm not, I'm not poo-pooing those, I just
I just think, you know, we're giving too much advantage to the builders here and maybe not the citizens here in this case. Just because they fall within the minimum standard sometimes, doesn't always mean that they're meeting what the area is either. You know, this is a totally different, uh, design than what the whole area is. So anyways, I just wanted to express my concerns on that.
Appreciate it, any other comments for Brett? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, any wanting to speak for this public hearing?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. John Zwingman, Advanced Consulting Engineering Services, one thirty-three West Washington Street, West Point, Nebraska. I'm here to speak in favor of this item. Uh, really the only thing I wanna tell you guys is that, uh, the, all the lots fall within the requirements of the current land development ordinance. All setbacks are shown on there. Uh, easements are on there and everything meets the requirements of the LDO. So that's all I wanted to say.
Any questions for Mr. Zwingman? Thank you, John. All right, we have a motion and a second, we did get a motion and a second.
No, we got the motion.
Oh, we got a motion, do we have a second to close the hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the hearing, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed, nay.
Just push that force, oh, you got it.
Did I get it, okay?
Yep.
I can get back up to that tab. There we go, sorry.
No, you're good. Motion passed.
Motion passes.
Item thirteen F-one, Resolution Number R-two-two dash one-six, approving the final plat and development agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move the Resolution Number R-two-two dash one-six be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen G, Application of Convergence LLC for Preliminary Plat of Wishbones Edition approximately northeast of the intersection of Highway eighty-one and Sixty-third Avenue, the Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, move the preliminary plat of the Wishbones Edition be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat, application of Convergence LLC.
Nope, oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Any, any, any discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Again, John Zwingman, and I know this thing's way too close because I'm loud. Uh, I'm John Zwingman representing Convergence Property. Uh, just wanted to tell you guys a little bit about the Wishbones subdivision because this is a major thing for the city of Columbus. Wishbones subdivision consists of eight outlots on a property located on the north side of Highway eighty-one, east of Sixty-third Avenue. As part of the sub, subdivision, Sixty-third Avenue adjacent to the property will be dedicated to the city of Columbus, that will happen along with the final plat. Uh, the developer will be responsible for extending water along Highway eighty-one from roughly Fifty-third Avenue to Sixty-third Avenue and along Sixty-third Avenue from Highway eighty-one north to Lost Creek Parkway. Uh, the developer will also be, um, responsible for the extension of a sanitary sewer from Sixty-third Avenue or on Sixty-third Avenue from Lost Creek Parkway South. Uh, that will extend almost all the way to Highway eighty-one, probably just short of Highway eighty-one. Uh, we are working with the city engineer and city staff on, uh, plans for that because that connects to an extension that HDR is developing for the city of Columbus. Uh, the developer will also be responsible for street improvements on Sixty-third Avenue. Uh, the street improvements, uh, will be a planned forty-one foot wide, nine inch thick concrete. Uh, this, we will have an undergr- underdrain system as part of the subbase for this. Uh, construction will be very similar to Forty-eighth Avenue. We are currently working with JEO Engineering. Uh, the city staff and Nebraska Department of Roads on a traffic impact study for this area. Uh, traffic impact study basically is bounded by Sixty-third Avenue on the west, Forty-eighth Avenue on the east, Lost Creek Parkway on the north and Highway eighty-one on the south, so we're encompassing all that. Uh, any traffic control devices, traffic calming devices, um, acceleration or deceleration lanes that are required, uh, for this on Sixty-third uh, will be constructed as part of this project. Um, onsite storm water collection system has been preliminary designed and been submitted to the city. Um, we're, we're working through a few things there. Most, the water will be stored, uh, in the retention ponds that are onsite, those sites will actually be used for a borrow site for fill for the uh, improvements also. The grading panel plan also includes the creation of a berm on the north side and on the east side of the property. The berm on the east side of the property will be four to six feet tall. Uh, we have a fifty-foot buffer zone there, uh, and we will have trees planted on top of that, uh, I believe the redevelopment plan calls for three rows of trees to be planted uh, to provide a buffer to the residential, uh, east of this development. On the north side adjacent to the horse barns, we will also be developing a berm that, we don't have as much space up there. That berm will be about two to four feet high and again, we'll have planting on it that to separate the barns uh, from potential residential or other development that happens north in the future. Entrance to the site, uh, is still being developed, that is part of the traffic impact analysis that we're working on. Uh, we hope to have a draft of that next week, uh, to be submitted to the city for review and we're I'm pushing that we have final, I'm pushing, but I'm pushing, uh, Department of Roads or Department of Transportation, so that doesn't always work well. To have a final draft of that prior to your, uh, be, your meeting next month. I guess preliminary design of onsite utilities has been submitted to the city engineering staff, easements will be provided where needed. We are still working with electrical company, uh, gas company and communications on how to bring their lines into the site, but those easements will be shown on the final plat, uh, for the city's review. Um, I think that's, I guess, oh yeah, we'll talk about zoning. Ms. Fosse-Cheek mentioned it earlier tonight, uh, that zoning will be B-two on them, on the majority of this, uh, when we come back. Uh, that is, that allows for the gaming facilities and games of chance to be there. The horse barns have been determined to fall under that. Uh, again, the barns are not for permanent, uh, I don't know what you want, keeping horses there, yeah, permanent housing of the horses, they'll be temporary, they'll be in and out through the race season. Uh, race season is only, we're talking five to six weeks and then those barns will be empty after that. And I know one of the other questions that was brought up at Planning Commission was campers. Uh, there will be no campers allowed at this site, so that is not something we should have to deal with. Any questions?
John, in the, in your traffic study, they're gonna look at entering the property, entering the casino in the parking lot and everything off Sixty-third?
Well, we are hoping for an entrance, um, off of eighty-one, a main entrance and what we're assuming is it'll, it'll be a right-hand entrance for, they actually call it northbound traffic even though it's headed west, a white, a right-hand entrance for northbound traffic. And then we will have an acceleration lane for a right-hand exit onto northbound traffic also. Traffic coming southbound or coming from the east is more than likely gonna have to turn onto Sixty-third Avenue and then enter, enter from another direction.
Turn out of the parkway. Turn out of the parkway and come in from Sixty-third.
Well, or turn onto Sixty-third and then come in midway through the site. And lot, I believe it's lot C that is shown on the plat is where the entrance off Sixty-third will occur.
I think the other thing Councilman Barr would be the fact that the traffic study, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bogus, but they'll look at traffic impact in that entire area. So they'll look at traffic impact on the parkway all the way down to Forty-eighth and what that impact might mean for lights or traffic signals in the future and that sort of thing, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're actually, we are to the point where we have current traffic modeled. We have casino racetrack traffic modeled. And they're working on future build-out. So that we're estimating how many vehicles could be there when that whole other one hundred and forty acres in that area is built out. So they're working on the future build-out right now.
Awesome. Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen H, comments from the mayor and city council members. No discussion may be held on this item.
Any comments from council members this evening? All I would like to say is I'd like to thank everyone tonight for their participation in the discussions that we've had here. The hiring of our new assistant chief. Good discussions by all. Thank you for your inputs, the back and forth. Decisions are made. We move forward and we work to make things better. The final approval of convergence for the casino, horse track. Again, thank you all for your support. I believe this is an awesome day for the city of Columbus, and it's great to see this project moving forward. Thank you. We move on to resolutions.
Item fourteen A, resolution number R-two-two-dash-one-seven, approving the agreement with RDG Planning and Design Incorporated and the amount of forty thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for consulting services for downtown improvement and development plan.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R-twenty-two-dash-seventeen be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt R-two-two-dash-one-seven. Any discussion?
I'm assuming they will certainly be working very closely with the people doing the study for the traffic and the VIDOCs and pedestrian overpass?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Questions answered. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on their first reading.
Item fifteen A, ordinance number two-two-dash-zero-three, amending the pay plan by changing job title and grade C-two from city planner to planning and economic development coordinator and adding the position of assistant fire chief to grade C-four.
I move the rules be suspended and ordinance number R... Ordinance number twenty-two-dash-oh-three be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two-two-dash-oh-three. Any discussion?
Just to be read by number, not to pass.
Ah, not to pass, thank you. Read by number only. Moving on to ordinances on their second reading.
No, we need to adopt yet.
We have to vote, though. Don't we? To... Yes.
Oh, I apologize.
We vote on this. Suspend the rules and then adopt.
Yep.
We're suspending.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
Then we vote.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please vote nay or yea. Rules are suspended.
Ordinance number two-two-dash-zero-three.
I move for the adoption of number twenty-two-dash-zero-three.
Second.
Second. And we have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two-two-dash-oh-three. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on their second reading.
Item sixteen A, ordinance number two-two-dash-zero-two, amending and re-adopting chapter ninety-two of Title Nine of Columbus City Code regarding nuisances. No motion is necessary. This is a second reading.
Any comments on this second reading? Seeing none. Motion, seeing none. Meeting adjourned.